They treat you okay?
Trying to find work in the city.
I think there's plenty.
So we'll find work here in the building?
He's the engineer.
I know.
There's plenty, there's plenty.
Once upon a time, there was an engineer. It's five o'clock.
Somewhere.
Good evening. Welcome to the Village of America Board of Trustees. Work session. And the motion to open this meeting.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before us, what we usually do is we go into executive session at this time. And there are items on the executive session, but I see we have a rather large crowd for a work session. If one of you would like to say, you know, the, what the matter is you're here for?
For the, for the, for the.
The whole gang? Alright. Mr. By. Okay, I hate to do this to you. But what's going to happen here is we are going to make motions to go into executive session. In executive sessions, there are matters that we're going to discuss. After the executive session, you can come back in the room or you could choose to go home. You, I think you've, you've, you've shown your support. And I think we understand that support. So I know a lot, some of you have small children at home. So don't think your, 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 your actions haven't been noted. Okay. Executive session matters. I'm going to call them one at a time. Zoning Board of Appeals correspondence is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to 1051F of the New York State Public Offices Law. I need a motion.
Go move.
Is second, somebody wants to do this?
Second.
Augustino?
Trustee Young.
Yes.
Backer, yes. Lucas?
Yes.
Support?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No. Garden Road, it is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session to pursue it to 1051H of the New York State Public Offices Law to discuss proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities, or sale or exchange of securities held by a public body, but only when publicly would substantially affect the value thereof. And this is one of those cases. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Augustino?
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Backer?
Abstained.
Dan abstained.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee DeFor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Village Manager Performance. I'm sorry, what? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's fair enough. Village Manager Performance Review, it is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to 1051F of the New York State Public Offices Law to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. They want to make that motion?
So.
Bogey.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Backer?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Support?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. There was another matter that came up?
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's about, about the village court and it's, it's anticipated and motion the, anticipated and motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to 1051F of the New York State Public Offices Law to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to.
You making that motion?
Yeah.
Somebody want to second that motion? Augustino?
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Backer?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Support?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No. Alright, so we have four matters to discuss in the executive session.
And I'm advising counsel too.
And advise counsel. So it's going to be a while. I know there's anxiety. He's going to be here. So that being said, I have to ask you all to step out. Grab something to eat, cup of coffee. Drink. Those of you drink. Those of you accuse me of drinking. Blonde, she works for the town, she lives in a village, I forget her name, her son used to wrestle with my son. Was sitting next to Jerry's wife.
Yeah.
Yeah. Jerry, what was the name of the woman sitting next to your wife? Blonde-tipped lady works for the town.
Francine.
Francine. No, no. The younger.
You look familiar.
Jenny. Jenny, okay. Oh, Kimbert. How are you?
Jerry, you have, you have that memo?
We have an executive session here in as much as a chamber.
You have that memo?
No, it's going to be, there's going to be other people.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, got it, got it, got it, got it.
Is Gottlieb on Zoom? In there?
In there, do you want me to set up here?
The one from Charlie?
From Charlie, yeah.
Yeah, set it up in here. Thank you, bro. No, come here. Well, I got your number, kid.
Were you at the youth festival last week?
No, I was not.
Give me your number.
03 is from the 648 lawyer, 624.
To, to the, it's to the CPA.
Anthony, I got it.
Yeah, we were editing it. Yeah, it was nice.
That, that quartet is the best. Quartet, the quartet is the best quartet I've ever heard. Yeah, oh my God.
Close the door, please, Anthony. Okay, we're getting Charlie Gottlieb on, he's going to be on the screen behind you. Did you used to work with Lovett?
Yeah.
How's he doing? I'm sorry.
We actually were unable to sort of work with him, but we wanted to.
What? Oh, okay. Oh. I'm sorry to hit it.
No, Charlie, is this a performance review, isn't it?
Oh, who is it then? I'm sorry, not Charlie. Get Charlie out, the, the other guy. Isn't it Hankel? Frankel?
He's not coming.
Is that coming? No, I didn't know that.
Mayor, you're still live on Zoom. Better.
So is that?
I have a key to this door.
Um, I do have, you have a key to that door.
Okay, this thing's this.
Oh.
We still have a. We need the all. Hey Anthony, you need to fix. On your computer. Now, go ahead. Is that there? Yes.
What was it?
This thing. All right, when we get going again, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go on for the stuff that's on for the regular meeting.
That's me highlighted, right?
Yeah, and hopefully look, okay, ten minutes to ease. You gotta wait for Anthony to.
No.
Excuse me, ma'am, does that mean you're not gonna do the work session?
We're gonna do the stuff that's on for regular meeting.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
Not for work session.
No, no, on the work session, if you look, it says on from November fourteenth, regular meeting. That's what we're gonna do.
Well, I, so the items that are on the schedule for.
The work session, uh, did, uh, items that are on for tonight on the regular session.
Does it not say that on yours?
They're folded.
Both on for.
Like two way, but hold on, like two way afterwards, it says on from November fourteen, regular meeting, does yours say that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, then that's it. I'm looking at the work sessions.
A C D E.
Yeah, next week, two weeks.
Uh, shorten your name.
Well, my item is number N, and it's probably not gonna be dealt with.
No, it's not gonna be dealt with, sir. You're welcome. Um. Anthony, are we on?
You wanna go right now?
Yeah, I wanna go right now. You're on, all right, oh, you ready?
I'm ready, ma'am.
Okay, uh, welcome back to the work session, uh, we adjourned the, uh, executive session, in the executive session, we took no votes, uh, that need to be reported. Uh, new business two A. Follow up discussion for consistent re- review for the Army Corps of Engineers permit for maintenance dredging. Derek?
Uh, mayor.
Again, whoever.
Yeah, so, um, Daniel, back me up, um, the the board wanted, uh, H C Z M C to provide comments to them regarding the application, uh, for dredging that we submitted to the Army Corps, which needs to be also, um, approved by the Department of State, the Department of State provided us thirty days to provide comments. That thirty day expires today. Um, so we have comments basically from, um, Chairman Burr regarding numerous policies, I'm not sure how far you want me to get into it, but, you know, the board has it in front of, in front of them. So we just need comments from the board that we can provide to um, our consultant, so that he can pass the audit to the D O S and anyone else who's asking for it, it's just the D O S, um, in my understanding. But that's really what we're doing here.
Um, and it's on for the regular meeting and, um, the H C Z M letter isn't part of the backup for the regular meeting, I mean, it's, it's, you know, and my recommendation would be.
Number seven, that one?
Yeah, and my recommendation would be that our recommendations be those of the H C Z M, because they, they took the deep dive, I did look at the meeting, um, I think none of us probably have spent as much time looking at this as they did, and you know, I, I agree with their recommendations. I think that's what the state needs to do, its determination.
Just so we're clear, this is the state's determination, we, we're not providing a consistency review, we're just providing, we're just providing comments.
And I think between.
Did you want us to also, uh, forward the C A F and the commentary that were prepared by A K R R?
Yeah, why don't we just send everything in the backup to, uh, the department.
But I think we have to say affirmatively that we support that, because that, I think those could be our comments.
That'll be the resume, so next meeting, right?
I know, I think we have to do it tonight.
Yeah.
So I'm saying, next meeting, I mean, after.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're kind of regular session.
Yeah, so it just resolve, we say the, uh, or the C A, as commentary, remember the consulting planner and the, uh, memo prepared by the Department of.
That's my recommendation.
There is a link.
Agree with Norma's, Norma's recommendation, but this is the first time I've seen the coastal assessment, assessment form, which is woefully inadequate. Uh, and I suggest if we forward this, if you calling changes on page two, uh, number four should be yes, not no. Number B, uh, two should be yes, not no. Uh, B four should be yes, not no. Uh, B six should be yes, not no. B on, uh, number nine should be yes, not no. And C one has to be yes, it says, is a waterfront site needed? How do you dredge without a waterfront site? And the, and by saying yes, it doesn't mean that these are negative impacts, they can be positive impacts as well, which is what needs to be emphasized, so I would like to have, you know, I don't mind sending it, I think Laura's recommendation is good, um, but I would be embarrassed to send this to the Department of State.
Let's put it again, Dan.
Again?
Go through your changes a bit.
Okay. On the A, number four could be a scenic resource.
Wow.
B two is development of future existing water dependent uses, the answer should be yes, that's why you're dredging. Number four.
Are we dredging to mitigate flooding?
Yeah.
I mean, what's the water?
But that, but that's one of the benefits of the dredging, it's not just what, what you're doing and while you're doing it, it's what the benefits are of it, that's gonna be a benefit.
It makes the application stronger.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, number four, potential recreational opportunity would be yes as well. You could do rafting or things, I mean, there are things that, that, again, that's a positive thing that the action would have. Uh, number six, alteration of one or more acres of land along the shoreline, um, when underwater or coastal waters, the answer is yes. Uh, you take all the area that you're doing, uh, it's well over that, and it says so in part of the backup. Right, uh, number nine, revitalization redevelopment of deteriorated or underutilized site, the answer is obviously yes. Number, uh, C, number one, waterfront site. How do you, how do you do the work in the water if you don't have waterfront sites, so the answer obviously has to be yes. With those changes on that, uh, being sent, I don't have a problem with Nora's suggestion whatsoever, but if I were the Department of State and looking at the coastal assessment form, I'd be scratching my head.
All right, I'm fine with that, just, let's just send it all. Everybody else fine with that?
I think we have to decide tonight.
Yeah, we said, this is why we worked.
So can, uh, and then can we make sure those changes are appropriated, please, before we send it out?
Yep.
Okay. Lovely. Uh, Holstead Avenue paving on for November fourteenth, Jerry, Dan?
Hey, this is when we have a good problem. A good problem is that we've received a notification that we have a four million dollar grant that we want to redo the crossings, the A D A ramps, sidewalks, the curbs, all of that stuff along coast side, uh, Holstead Avenue. Uh, the problem for us is that it, the road is in terrible, it continues to be a problem for our plow, um, especially after, um, um, the first or second, uh, snowfall. So what we wanna do is we wanna proceed with, uh, mill and overlay of the areas that need to be mill and overlay, um, so that we have some rigibility, um, and the ability to properly plow without peeling up the patch that has been consistently um, applied over the many years.
So we keep peeling up the patches as we plow.
Uh, the plow, the first or second snow, the patch just comes right up. So what we wanna do is we wanna create, um, a better roadway for the residents and for the visitors, but it gives us time to properly design the project and get everything done, because we're probably, according to my man Dan here, three to four, maybe five years out.
And are we gonna have to repave this anyway?
We will have to repave it, what we're using now is grant money, we're using money that the bank gives us.
Yeah.
The payment, and then in four or five years, which is the last part of the project will be to repave this project.
And that's a matching grant of like, it's eighty, it's, we matched twenty percent of that.
The sidewalks, but the state will continue to give us money and chips and other roadway money annually. So as it builds up, we'll be able to use state grant money to repay the roads.
So if we hadn't gotten this grant, we were gonna be paving this road anyway.
We were.
What, what is the under road? Is, is cobblestone or is?
In some areas, it's brick, um, after they remove the collar tracks.
Yes.
But not all the areas, just the areas.
Brick doesn't, the, the brick settles unevenly.
Correct, and what creates is, it creates.
So we're gonna remove the brick?
We're gonna remove the brick on, at the final juncture, not right now.
So it's gonna break up, I, I thought our previous engineer had told us that if, that putting a temporary coat on would last one or two years maximum.
It, it will last a short amount of time, but not one or two years, it'll last a little bit longer than that.
Because we're milling it too.
Right, because we're milling it too, we're not just putting a.
That's putting a top.
No, I understand, but it's, because we went through this with, um, uh, with our previous, and, um, I, I, I'm uptight about spending four hundred thousand dollars to rip it right up, you know, to rip it up, uh, with knowledge of forethought, you know, in the immediate future.
But the same, so we didn't have the four million dollar grant, um, when her nanny recommended that we do not overlay this roadway that we dig down, and that we were proceeding with, and then we received the grant, so now we need time to design a project, make use, and take advantage of the grant.
The width of the road could change at this point because of changing sidewalks, so, so, so we can't do the, we can't do the better job now, because we don't quite know what the parameters of the street might be.
We just want, we just want rigibility and the elimination of our plows, peeling up everything that we continue to.
Yeah, okay.
How much is the cost to repair if we do this plow thing, I'm just trying to like, you know, we're spending four hundred thousand dollars.
Three mil, the roadway.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, you know, when we rip up, you know, when we have to repair the road after winter damage, how much do we apply, you know?
Significant, I'm not sure I have a.
But that, I, so I think.
Long stretch, that long stretch.
So that's money that we won't be spending too, I'm just saying it may not be quite four hundred thousand dollars.
It's not gonna be anywhere near four hundred thousand.
Okay.
And that, that's, that's part, that's part of the issue that is of concern to.
Oh, sir.
Is is there a, uh, is there a consensus to have this on today? Yes, yes.
Or, I'm not for it.
I mean, I'd kinda like to know how.
Victor? Good, good. Uh, accessibility at Village Hall, Regatta, we talked about this, uh, the Bill Penessa building, uh, Bill Penessa, uh, Lieutenant Penessa, I'm sorry. Uh, and the Johnson, the, the, this is a study, uh, to make sure that this building and the, uh, pavilion down at Harbor Island are A D A compliant. Uh, as, as you can tell, these buildings were built a long, long, long time ago, before there was an Americans with Disabilities Act. And, uh, we, we wanna make sure that, uh, we are serving the needs of as many residents as we can. Uh, everybody fine with us being on for the regular meeting?
It, it's also the Regatta building.
Is the Regatta right now?
It's a.
Oh, so we got it too?
Yeah.
It's a Regatta, oh, that's right, I, 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 I missed that.
But you want, you need forty, four, four thousand five hundred, not three thousand.
Right, we need, so the, the, the study, the study amount would be forty five hundred, right?
Yeah, the, the way that the resolution was written, uh, yeah, there are funds available in the, uh, village manager's contractual services budget. Uh, this doesn't really require board approval to authorize the execution or the funding of the contract, but it's just, you know, to demonstrate the board's commissioning to seeing this get done, so I, I didn't put it, I, I don't think I put a total in the resolution, but you can certainly add that if you like.
Okay, so the contract says three thousand dollars, but it's just for two buildings, and we're gonna add a third building, and then it says we're, we're get, it's, we, there's sort of like an open ended, if requested, we will return for properties per direction from the client to determine remediations to meet the requirements at two fifty an hour. Um, I mean, I think that that's pretty open ended, and I would imagine that you're a little, I, I don't, you'll be monitoring that in terms of how many, if they come back for something.
Yeah.
It's not, you're not just gonna say, okay, do it, and they could build for a hundred hours.
No, at this point, I just want the assessment.
Right, the assessment.
I don't wanna go past that.
But we're, but we're, but this contract gives them the two fifty, and I think maybe we don't wanna do that part.
Well, I won't pull that trigger on two fifty, but that's therefore. So if we do, if we do end up, we have a building department, we'll have a building, building inspector do those kinds of things.
Right.
So I don't think I need to, I need to worry about that.
But it's, it's, but it's in our, it's, it's in our, it's in our resolutions, the question is, do we wanna do that, or do we wanna?
I think for some reason we decided to do it.
I have to have it in.
Okay.
Or else I gotta come back, and, but I really don't.
You, you don't have to come back at all, from what Dan had just said, but I think the resolution would be for forty five hundred dollars, uh, for the three buildings. I just am very concerned with, we opened any contract, but you can do it by yourself if you wish.
It, it, but he's only gonna come in to review something if we ask him.
My ass.
Yeah.
Right, you're right, that's it. At least we know what they're gonna charge.
Yeah. It's just a, it's just a price quote, it's not a price you know, that we have to pay. Is everybody fine for having us on tonight?
Yes.
Victor? Yes, all right, we got. We got a. Now, turkey trout donations, there's a whole bunch of donations, uh, that local businesses have given us, and, uh, if, uh, you take a look at it, uh, there's many of them, and we will have to go through them at the meeting, uh, Bob, here's a question for you. One of the donations is from my son in law. Uh, do I have to accuse myself on it?
On accepting a donation from your son in law?
Yeah.
No.
And, and it, just be clarity, this is donation for the turkey trout.
Right.
Okay, all right, it's gonna disclose.
This one. What are they, the donation from the Hillside Alley is for Turkey Sea.
The resolution says three thousand dollars on the third, whereas.
You're talking about the previous thing.
Yeah, on the previous.
I, I, I think that I might say that at the time it was prepared, um. Why don't we just make it forty five hundred?
We will, when we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't have. I, I didn't have the final number. But, so I just wanted to note that, uh, we did have a number, but.
We will amend the resolution. Uh, bond resolution on for regular meeting, uh, or you wanna talk about that? Absolutely, Mayor, at the end of the fiscal year, usually after the audit, we put together a bond resolution for the authorized projects during the first sort of fiscal year, plus whatever current project we're enacted in this current fiscal year. And we do that every year. This is done every year at the end of the audit, absolutely, Mayor.
This is done every year at the end of the audit. Absolutely, Mayor.
Whatever problems with that?
These are bands, not bombs, yes?
The bond anticipation notes that are converted into bonds. And that's how we do it every year?
Yes.
All right, that's on. Okay, who wants to talk about the dump trucks?
Um, it's a request from DPW.
Purchased three, two by four dump trucks, one four by four dump salt truck and one salt conversion package. Uh, two vehicles are being replaced due to Hurricane, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just want to read the.
The two, two of the four being replaced, uh, due to the, uh, due to Hurricane Ida, uh, so two are replacements that were included in capital plan that, um, are being requested by DPW so that we can effectively, um, it'll be not this year, but next year plow snow, but we're not gonna get them at the next.
We will still plow snow. If not with these trucks.
We have enough equipment minus two to be able to do it. Typically, we have two. Uh, we have more than two backups, but we don't have those.
Don't want anybody to make, we're not gonna be plowing snow.
We're gonna be plowing a lot of snow.
I think so.
Uh, first, that's on for the regular meeting. First amendment to wireless technology facility lease agreement, but if Fenimore wrote so, so. We actually discussed this at another work session, didn't we?
There was the special use part of it. That was just approved.
Now does the agreement?
They properly did an agreement, uh, an agreement with several, uh, changes, um, I discovered the memo, uh, mostly, uh, administrative in nature. Uh, uh, one thing was to update who the notices go to. Where a proposed changes was, uh, right now it renews upon uh, written notice from the, uh, the tenant, now they wanted to change it so that automatically renews, it would only uh, terminate upon notice from the tenant. So it's just changing, flip flopping how the, what the notices require.
And we can't terminate it.
Uh, I, I think there are termination clauses in there. But, uh, it, you know, it's a, it's a, it's not as, not as easy as, uh, let's say we had a, a smokestack that we had something on it. So that's a tower that they built. It's a little little difference of, uh, they made a lot more investment in property than they would if they were just installing on the top of it. Um, then, uh, right now they also ask for additional renewal periods.
How, how many is that? Cause it, it's the old paragraphs.
Well, the, the old. Well, it was, that was originally five, five year and that took, that would have taken you through twenty thirty one. So it, it, it's, it's not eleven additional, it's six additional. It's eleven renewal periods total for the.
But we're adding six addition.
We're adding six additional.
So when, so that when we discussed this at our last work session, we were told that this was just simply of, you know, giving them approval. We weren't changing anything in the contract. Now I'm hearing we are changing.
No, 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 no.
That wasn't what we were discussing the last time. What we were discussing last time was just, we weren't, we, we, the contract was not before us at all. The last time.
It is before us now.
Yes, but apples and bowling balls.
Well, this contract was actually in the backup last time. Um, so we're, so basically we're doing thirty more years. We're extending it thirty more years. And how much do we get more per year?
Uh, it's, it's, we get a commission, it's a commission person get a percentage of what they generate.
Does it ever go up or not?
Uh, I don't think that commission rate, uh, changes.
I guess my question is, if we were doing this with scratch today as day one, would we be doing it at fifteen percent or we doing, or what is the going rate? But we're, we're, we're adding thirty more years to this. That, that's one of the provisions here.
I, I could certainly pull some of my, uh, colleagues to find out whatever reasons they have. It, it's, there are several variables that go into that equation. Uh, the least of which is usually there is a premium paid for municipal properties as opposed to privately owned properties with, uh, municipalities tend to generate addition, uh, more revenue than a building would. Uh, again, also the investment that they have to make in the property, for instance, like I mentioned, they built that tower. Uh, if we had a building that they could just put, uh, equipment on top of, they wouldn't have made a larger initial investment. So I, I can certainly pull my colleagues, but it'll, it'll be, um, I, it'll have to that be, uh, it's, it's nuanced.
But it's, we, it would be, I think it behooves us to try and find out is if we postpone this for two weeks, is there, is it, is there a time critical on this? Other than they'd like it done as soon as possible?
Obviously, they, they, they want it done as soon as possible.
I understand that.
Two weeks, I think we can. We can certainly.
I would just, that, you know, we're giving them an extra thirty years. They clearly want this site. They've invested in this site. If we could get a little more revenue for our residents during those thirty years, I think that would be beneficial. Make Aggie happy, right?
We're currently at thirty five percent.
Thirty five percent?
There. But their rental income.
Okay, that's not what the contract says. It says fifteen percent.
This year, in addition to the rent, and it shall pay the landlord on a monthly basis thirty five percent of all amounts of rental income received from the second and all subsequent subleases at the first.
Are you on page two?
Three.
It's by fifty percent of the first piece and thirty five of the additional.
Okay, let's, but if, if, if the boards want to hold it for two weeks, it's, two weeks isn't gonna kill us, is it?
I can ask.
See what you can find out on that.
All my colleagues.
Thank you. Fire council requests to establish official vehicle parking at Columbia Firehouse. On for regular, am I having a problem with that? No, usually put a chief's car.
Uh, why isn't already there was my question?
Uh, building code on for November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two.
Are we ready for that?
We're not ready for that.
Well. What's on for the?
I'm sorry. Wandered off the. I was going break next.
But.
Mayor, I know that's all for, for, just that, that's gonna take a substantial amount of work. It's not gonna be ready for the twenty.
Do we have a deadline on this?
Um, two. Regulation says by the second. But there's no.
Two K?
Because it, it, not in January. Hey, we could do this by December thirty first. Okay.
And there's no, there's no.
Urgency, okay.
Sorry about that.
Are you still working on it? Like you don't need our approval to work on this, right?
No. You have to. I need some time to get a draft together for your year.
Okay, so even if we were gonna discuss it tonight or in two weeks, you still have to get the law drafted.
It has, in my former life, uh, uh, when they, uh, came out with the title nineteen code of two thousand three, we didn't wind up adopting it until two thousand six.
Okay, uh, we, we, we finished tonight's agenda. We had to take a break before we come back at, uh, eight o'clock.
I have a question on this. The question is, we have, I assume the building department is looking at this. Uh, they also, and we just give us a quick, brief summary of what the implications are of what we would now have to do that we do.
I think it's more legal than building department. It's, it's administration. It's not substance.
But it sounds like there's more code enforcement involved in this.
Right.
There's, there, there's a, like a regular.
What we have to do is we have to take, there's a model that they've modeled law they've drafted.
Yeah.
We have to take that and compare it to what we have already and integrate what we want from the existing code into the model. That's what's taking the.
Oh, fun.
Yes. Sort of like the tree law on steroids.
Yeah.
Okay. I need a motion to close the work session.
So moved.
Okay. All favor. Thank you. We'll see you back here in Boston.
Camera and microphone are on.
Thank you, sir. L M C?
Yeah, thank you, sir.
That's him.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the eight P M November fourteenth twenty twenty two. Board of Trustees regular meeting. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you have a cell phone, and I'm sure you all have a cell phone. Please put it mute. Thank you. I need a motion to open this meeting. All in favor?
Hi.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
What we call roll.
Trustees, Young, your snatchers.
Yeah.
Lucas.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
Communication to the board, round one. Mic is open, folks. Oh, and just when you go up to the mic, kind of project your voice at that mic. So L M C T V can hear you. There's a problem. The sound system tonight. I'll just be sorry before you begin, there's a five minute time limit on everybody. Thank you. I just wanted to set up clarification. Please continue.
Good evening, Mayor Board. Hopefully this won't take five minutes. I just have a question about something I've heard you talking about. Oh, sorry. My name is Allison Stabile. And I live at five seven two Parkway in Marinac. I heard you talking at the work session about a cell tower renewal. And I don't know a lot about how that works, but I have a question. Um. It sounds like the renewal, it chose for thirty years, the way it plays out. And the village receives funds for that. My question is, over that period of time, over all those years, if whoever the person was leasing the tower decides to change the equipment or make modifications to equipment or add equipment or upgrade the equipment or increase density of equipment, is the village entitled to know that? Or once they're leasing the cell tower, they get to do whatever they want with it? And the village has no, doesn't, doesn't get advised at all? That's my question.
That's a great question.
This is essence of my question.
And we have an answer. Jerry?
I will review the contract, but is the question if they add a carrier, are we notified or? It's a little.
Well, I guess. We're renewing lease now with existing equipment. And I don't know exactly what the nature of that equipment is or how much equipment, but things keep changing and, and equipment can be added or there can be modifications, improvements or density. It seems to me that if there's a cell tower in the village of Marinac and over the course of thirty years, whoever's leasing the cell tower has the right to put whatever they want on it without the village being notified. I just wonder if that's something that we shouldn't request in the renewal contract so that we know what they're putting on.
But it's only, it's only purposes for cell phones. And if a new carrier, like if they take upon a new carry, there are many carriers on that. If they take upon a new carrier, they have to inform us and they have to pay us based upon the number of carriers they have.
Like, like four G versus five G, five G versus, I guess, six G eventually.
Whatever is coming next, which we today, we really have no way of knowing what's coming down the pipe. So I guess I'm just wondering, you know, when new things are developed, we have the right to be notified of new things being added.
I can check. I think, you know, if they, they're doing construction out there, they have to get building permits. I mean, it's, you know, it's addition to cell phones, it's things like radio systems for the state police. You know, local police, local fire. So it's more than just cell phones, but.
Yeah. Question is because.
I know that when we recently, when they still have an apartment, had to apply to for a new permit, they they were also required to identify any changes in the equipment. They got the approval.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Well, something we'll check on. We only.
Yeah, not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just asking a question because obviously there are still some conversations we had. You're looking on the contract, right? So I just thought, isn't it reasonable to ask, you know, what kind of notifications the village get when things change or things are added? You know, don't we have a right to know?
Yeah, there's language in the contract. I can follow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Who else?
For those of you in the audience who don't know me, Blunt Tip is fabulous in history. So in the work session, we were having a little discussion about bands and bonds. And basically, Dan asked the question, is this a ban or a bond? And it's like, well, we do bands all the time. And it's a bond. There is a difference between a band and a bond. A band usually is the project's not quite done yet. But we haven't got all the money in. And then we do it for the amount, for a certain amount. And then when the project is completed and the rest of the money comes in, we go to a bond. We have seventeen projects on this list that we haven't, that I'm finished. We haven't finished collecting the money on. So are we doing a ban? Or are we doing a bond?
What you want to answer?
We're issuing a bond.
We issued a bond. Can you explain the mechanics behind it for Mr.?
We're issuing a bond. Binance is a patient note is a short term instrument, which is up to five years. The first year is no principal payment, just interest. A bond is over a period of probably use of this of the instrument, which could be fifteen to twenty years. So.
So the option is.
So the option is, is we could issue a ban and not pay the first year and then pay the remaining four years. And then that of course is thirty thousand. Then later on, we could bond that band for another sixty thousand. I think it's beneficial just to go straight in and get a bond and save the thirty thousand.
Are we allowed to pull up bonds on projects that aren't complete?
Once a project's a complete.
But a lot of them are.
You're just definition of not, you're saying the completion. Well, first and foremost, that's not accurate. When a project is first authorized, you're allowed to go out and issue a bond for that authorized project. There's no distinction between whether a project is complete or not complete. It's whether it's been authorized or not. The type of financing, you will take that instrument unless there's not a fixed cost at the end, which it might increase. Those are different things you have to analyze in cash management when you're deciding what to issue. All of these projects, the determined factor, what they're going to be each one is already made. I have a finite number that needs to be borrowed. I'm trying to save the village money by just issuing a bond. And that's the game I've, not game, that's the planning we've always done in the village to try to save money.
So once it's authorized, we need the bond for the full amount and then wait for the final bills to come in.
Case in point, Village Hall gets authorized to be built twenty million dollars. As soon as he gets authorized, I have a legal obligation to get a bond note and borrowed twenty million dollars.
Okay, that's what, that's what I wanted to know the difference because I have a sheet here that says ban and bond. So what we're doing is we haven't collected all the money yet, but because the money is authorized, we can go and bond for the full amount.
Right.
Thank you.
You know, we're doing for fifteen to. You know, we're doing for fifteen to twenty years. Is that what we're doing? We're doing the bonds for fifteen to twenty years?
There's five of them.
Typically, some of the projects are fifteen, the sewer tend to go to twenty-five to thirty.
But they're all long-term, they're not.
They're all long-term, that's process.
This is upon the life, the projected life of the product. Period of usefulness of the object.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, the sewer will last longer than twenty-five years.
We've got a hundred years at the last. Well, the wooden pipes last, hopefully, these new ones.
Anyone else? Okay. That being said, next item up is public hearings. Public hearing on P L L one, oh, I'm sorry, P L I, twenty twenty-two, lowering village-wide speed limits to twenty-five miles per hour. I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Ogie?
He's young?
Yes.
Snatchers? Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Um, okay. This was something that we have worked on before. A few years ago, the village lowered the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour on all streets that were under village control, that were not cul-de-sacs, and were not dead ends. The idea being that we weren't allowed under the law at that time to change all our streets universally, because the New York State Department of Transportation was only allowing New York City to do that. This law was passed by New York State to allow municipalities like ourselves to avail ourselves of the opportunity to lower our speed limits to twenty-five miles per hour universally. So really, what this is doing tonight is bringing the rest of our streets up into compliance with what the majority of our streets already are, the vast majority of our streets already are. Somebody have any questions or concerns from the board? Anybody in the public?
I'm in agreement for everything except for Boston Post Road. Boston Post Road happens to be a state road. I foreworded to see if there were any pedestrian accidents on the Boston Post Road. There were not. There were, you know, thirty-five accidents. Most of the accidents were turning onto the Boston Post Road, somebody not paying attention. None of them, a few of them referred to injury. We went to the hospital. Just, you know, a bit sore back, sore neck, and such like that, but I saw absolutely no pedestrian deaths on Boston Post Road. It's already twenty miles an hour in front of the schools. I don't know why you'd want to lower a state road to twenty-five miles an hour when we're surrounded by higher speed limits, and either you're going to have Mariner to speed trap, or I can go twenty-five miles an hour and watch all the police cars, bicyclists, and joggers pass me.
Thank you. I just want to point out that there was a fatality of Boston Post Road. It wasn't a pedestrian fatality. It was on a Sunday morning, right by where I live, and I was actually out for a walk, and I heard the accident. A couple of youngsters in a car were speeding very, very fast on Boston Post Road. A garbage truck pulled out of the high school. As the garbage trucks pulling out, these kids didn't have a chance to stop because they were going so fast, and they both died.
That's a twenty mile an hour speed.
It was, it wasn't during school days.
It's five o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, it was about, you remember it. They wouldn't have gone.
And how would the speed limit prevent that? Five o'clock in the morning?
Then why have speed limits at all?
I mean, force thirty.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, so a couple items. First, we're still waiting on the memo from our traffic engineer from A K R F. We should have that for the next meeting. And as far as the state highways, there are two, two state highways in the village of Mariner. Route one, which is east and west Boston Post Road, and Route one twenty-seven, which is Harrison and the other. We, although we have the authority to establish a speed limit on a state road, it has to be agreed to by the state, the state D O T. We have been, by, I mean, our engineers from A K R F have been trying to get in touch with the resident engineer for this region of the Department of Transportation. I don't know if they've made that connection yet. I don't know what their response would be to a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit on either Post Road or Route one twenty-four.
I've also talked to Large Month and the Town of Mariner, and they have expressed interest in doing this in the future, too. Just, we're ahead of the game here.
And a couple other traffic engineers actually have already called me about what we're doing, so I let them know. But that's one to let you know that we're still waiting on the required memorandum from our traffic engineer.
Thank you, sir. There's nothing else? Public or from the board, need a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Wait a minute, don't we have to keep it open because of the memo?
To get the letter from?
No, no. You, no. But Bob, you can close the public hearing and act on it at the next meeting. If you want, it's here.
Public hearing, but act on it at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Information that we. Your discretion. Your, your, the board.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
My question is, is that information based, that will be relevant to the decision we'll be making?
Why wouldn't you want to have the uniform throughout the whole code?
So.
Well, he's pointing at the problems and the issues.
Well, no, the answer is, it's part of your analysis as to what, whether to pass the law. The legal requirement to hold a public hearing is to receive comments from the public. You, at a future meeting, you can bring the item up for discussion and review any additional which you really think is necessary or germane to help you make the decision. But that, that doesn't need to be done in the context of a public here. That's fair statement. You start turning.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Ogie?
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tufor?
Yep.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, and thank you all very much. Okay, next is a public hearing on P L L J twenty twenty-two. Scria and Ria programs, am I pronouncing that right?
Scream injury.
Scream and Dream Program, and Dan, just give this a little. I brought this to the board after it was brought to our attention by a resident.
Who's here?
Who's here tonight? Dan, can you just give a brief explanation?
Sure. There are several, there's a program that the village participates in called the Senior Citizen Rent Increase Exemption Program. It's basically a program through which rents are subsidized and controlled for the person, a senior citizen, who makes right now under thirty-five thousand dollars. This is to increase that income threshold from thirty-five to fifty thousand, which is the maximum allowable pursuant to New York State law. And the board is also considering another component of the program, which would extend that same rent increase exemption for disabled residents who are renting units and fall below a certain, fall below a certain income threshold.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, before you start the public hearing, I just need to point out that if there's an error in the way this law is drafted, I apologize for that. The fifty thousand dollar number is put in the wrong place. It should be referring to the income, not to the amount of the exemption. So I'm going to have to redraft this law for your public hearing.
Do we need to notice the public hearing then?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to postpone.
Okay, but we can schedule. We can schedule a public hearing for two weeks.
No, we draft the law. I can do it on the fly if you want, but I prefer not to.
Okay, so was scheduled a public hearing in two weeks, but the first in December.
Right.
Okay. And is this for both, or just the spree?
It's one law.
Oh, right, right, right.
We combined it into one law.
Okay, so we're going to hold off on this until the first meeting in December.
No, well, it'll be on in two weeks.
No, we're going to schedule a public hearing for the first meeting in December.
So we'll have it on our work session agenda for two weeks from now.
Right, it'll be scheduled again to be heard most likely for the first meeting in December. Which would be December twelfth, I believe. So I'm sorry if you're here for that, and it's, yeah, but.
There's other things I wanted to talk about the last time, but we only talked about screen. It wasn't even for me. I was doing it for one of my neighbors. So if you want to talk about something that's on, on the agenda, you do it at Communication to the Board. If you want to talk about something that's not on the agenda, you do it at Communication to the Board, which we just had, but we have a second one later on. Okay?
Yeah, you wait around for that, or you could, you could do it when you come back in two weeks. You know, whichever is up, whichever's convenient for you. I said whichever is convenient for you, either, you know, wait till tonight or come back in two weeks. Okay, thank you.
When Glenn's speaking, then that's when you can speak. He's always, he comes to communication.
All right, let's not do the cross talk here, okay? Next up, order the bills. Okay. First is resolution authorizing budget transfers for water utilities for one sixty-nine Mount Pleasant, which is this building. So I guess we went over budget on what we were projecting for this building?
Yes, that's what happens when you get back to work full-time. And you're.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Hmm, okay, so this will take four thousand from contingent and put it to general fund, building safety. The safety building, water utilities. Do they have any questions, concerns? Could I have a motion, please?
Wait a minute, I have one comment up. I think it's page eleven, there's the bill for the.
Victor, we're not doing that. We're doing the transfer.
Okay.
Budget resolution to fund water utilities. I'll make the motion. All the roll.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Snatchers?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
Or? Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, and this is probably where your question is going to be, Victor. The next up is the order of abstract vouchers, and it's nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eight cents. Any questions or concerns, Victor?
Page eleven, there's a hundred dollars paid to Ops firm out of a larger amount, it's like forty-seven thousand, and that's because of a I think, saved the sound conversation. I was involved in a case, let's say, six years ago, it drags still, so I recuse for that.
Thank you for letting us know. Any other questions, concerns from the board? No. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Augustino? Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you.
The next up is the abstract manual vouchers. This is mostly payments the village is making to Westchester Joint Water Works, both for water and for sewer rent fee. Which I guess we still have to pay. Uh. Any questions or concerns? Well. No, okay. Need a motion? So moved. A second, please?
Second.
Ogie?
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tufor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, I just want to point out, when I said sewer rent fee, the village charges sewer rent fee based upon water usage of our residents. That fee is collected by Westchester Joint Water Works through their billing, and then remitted to the village. So it's really a village fee that they're collecting for us. Could you hand this down, Ogie, please?
Thank you, excuse me.
Old business resolution, dog park to be held. Resolution scheduling a public hearing on P L L D twenty twenty-four. We ready for this public hearing, Bob?
Yes.
We are, huh? Well. The revision was a lot quicker than the original law. Let's look at it that way.
It took a year.
Yeah, the original law took a few more years than that, and killed a lot of trees. All right. This will be scheduled in the public hearing for November twenty-eighth on a revised tree law.
So moved.
Okay, I'll second. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Ogie, please.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Snatchers?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Next up is changes to fees and charges for recreation fees. I wasn't here when this was discussed, but I reviewed it. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns? Yeah, okay, I need a motion.
What they are, or?
Really? Well, there are a lot, there's a lot of them. Now, we're running through them. Basically, fees are going up around, usually around a four or five percent for some things, and for other things, like athletic field rentals, they're going up by sixteen percent. And non-resident fees are going up on a much greater level. So, you know, we have a beautiful park in Harbron Park, but it doesn't come, it doesn't come free. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done to maintain that park and to keep it as beautiful as it is. So this is, you know, we're still probably subsidizing, but I think it's much closer to having people who use the park pay for the usage and getting that burden off of the homeowner. Okay, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ogie, please.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
The next up is harbor fee charges. The same basic principle holds. We are in some sense, not charging enough for people who put their boats in the harbor, and we are adjusting that, and it falls, you know, there's some, there is some burden on our residents who have boats, but most of it falls to non-residents. Questions or concerns? All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Augustino?
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Snatchers?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Four C is resolution authorizing stormwater system design proposals. We're holding Gertrude Avenue for more information. Is that right? Say that? I can't hear.
So, I'm sorry, we're doing a an initial study first, which Dan will expect.
Yeah, when we discussed this at work session, we, the board wanted us to complete the flood mitigation study for Washingtonville and the industrial area for which you are, you've authorized us to use the ARPA money for, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So we are actively getting proposals, and when we have that proposal, we'll come back to the board. So that's why we're holding that right there.
Okay, so Florence Street has been a troubled area, Florence Park floods and people in Florence.
We had D P W with engineering out there, and some that were ready.
And it was a, it was a sewer problem? No, it wasn't.
Storm.
Storm, that's what I meant.
Storm, sure.
All right, and we saved some money doing this by having a village engineer in-house.
The engineer is going to be doing a construction.
So the, the cost of the contract has gone down. Thank you. Okay, I'll make the motion on that. And that was second, please.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Snatchers?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
All right, the next up is the bond resolutions. I have to do these all individually, right?
Please. Yeah.
All right. Go ahead.
I have a the resolution for fourteen million, nine hundred and forty-seven, seven, seven, seven. You have five bond resolutions. A, B, C, E, and F? Am I correct?
E. A, B, C, D, E. There's no F.
Well, it says, yeah, we can prep it out, but no, no big deal. Well, it says, yeah, um, we can prep it out, but no, no big deal. So we have, um, two of the bond issues are for water and for sewer. One, are we gonna have Westchester Joint Water Works come in? Because this is significant bonding.
They're coming up, they're coming into twenty-eight.
Yeah, because the, um, the bonding that we have, that we're going for the sewer. Is more than all the bonding we currently have outstanding. And the water is probably about sixty percent of what we have outstanding in bonds. Uh, so before joint water works come in, I would suggest that you have a, um. A revenue expense statement from them. And to make the adjustment that you have to make, not only to pay this, but to have some extra money, because you still got a whole bunch of, uh. Of, of water items that are gonna have to come in and get paid for. And you're going to have another, um. In- entire sewer project that. Jerry. Uh, last phase about five million?
Right.
Three million?
First phase was about five million.
Okay, so you have a last phase, which is about three, three million. Uh, the, the other thing is, and I say this over and over again, you're borrowing the money. Uh, the amount of money that you're borrowing from the general fund matches how much we're currently spending. Uh, uh, what we're currently paying for general bonds. So basically, with this, you're break even, but then we have about another four million, five million dollars worth of local projects. I think there's somewhere around thirty million dollars worth of projects, so that, still gotta be paid for. You have to meet. And discuss a capital budget and how you're gonna actually pay for this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. Uh, first one, bond resolution dated November. Today's date, fourteen, it's a blank. Uh, and. Authorizing the issuance of up to two hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hu- two hundred and fifty-four, eight hundred and thirty-eight. Aggregate principal amount serial bond of the Village of Mariner, County of Westchester, State of New York pursuant to local finance law. To finance the cost of the creation of a village master plan and the acquisition of village motor vehicles. So that's the first one, I need a motion?
So moved. So moved.
Second. Will we call? Trustee young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee to four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, the next one is a bond resolution, uh, dated today, authorizing the issuance of. One million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars aggregate principal amount serial bonds for the Village of Marineric. Uh, to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, reconstruction of village streets. Uh, the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction improvements to village parks and the acquisition, construction, and reconstruction of village buildings. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Augustino. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Before.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, the next up, on resolution auth- authorizing the issuance of up to a hundred thousand, thirty-one dollars. Aggregate principal amount serial bond, uh. To finance the cost and acquisition of machinery and apparatus for firefighters and the reconstruction of village docks. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee to four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, the next up, uh, bond resolution authorizing the issuance of six million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four. Dollars aggregate principal amount. Pursuant to local, uh, to finance the cost of an acquisition, construction, reconstruction of improvements to the village water system. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Augustino. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez. Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee to four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
There's one more.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Bond resolution, uh, dated November fourteen, twenty twenty-two. Uh, pursuant to local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction, reconstruction of improvements to the village sewer system. Six million, six, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars.
So moved.
Ogie. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee to four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, Jared, this one, the sewer one, uh, that's. Hopefully gonna put the save the sound issue to bed.
Yes.
Yes. I'm asking, yeah.
Yes.
ADA consultation, uh, we talked about this in work session. The village has, uh, many buildings that are. Built long before the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed and, uh, those buildings need to be. Investigated to see if, what we could do to make them more accessible, uh, to everyone in the community, especially those with handicaps. Uh, so this. Resolution, uh, would be the village spending, uh, it says three thousand, but it's actually, I'm gonna amend that to four thousand, five hundred dollars. Because it's three buildings, and when we originally asked for this quote, it was only two buildings. Uh, so we're doing the regatta, we're doing this, uh, ancient building here, and we're doing the pavilion, uh, down at Harbor Island. Which I believe was built in the thirties, right?
Yeah, and those are all reflected in the top of the resolution.
Right. Uh, so resolution accessibility inspections at Village Hall at the Regatta, one twenty-three Marineric Avenue. The William Panessa Public Safety Building, that's this building, and Stephen Johnson Pavilion, Pavilion at Harbor Island Park. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call, please, go. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee to four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is consistency review resolution, uh, for the United States Army Corps of Engineers Maintenance dredging program. Uh, we will examine this, uh, trustee, uh, Natchez made some changes to the, uh, environmental assessment form. Coastal environmental assessment form, and, uh, with those changes. I'm sorry, say again?
Coastal consistency form.
There's a C A. Coastal assessment form, yeah. Yeah, it's not a consistency, it's coastal assessment. Uh, but there's change, we, the board, uh, is gonna adopt the changes that trustee Natch has made to that document that were. Uh, reflected by, you know, you took note of that, right? Yeah, the village, uh, does not give determination of consistency on this, uh, we are asked for our opinion. It's, it's a state action and the state gives its own determination of consistency, isn't that right, Bob?
That's correct, that's correct.
All right, any questions, concerns?
So we're, and we have, um, some commentary from H C Z M.
Yes.
So all of the documentation that's on the work session is gonna go.
Just going.
The state.
You're gonna amend the resolution more?
I think it, I don't, I, it says, it, I think it says, whereas the Village of Mariner Carbon Coastal Management Commission. Has submitted comments to the village board for their consideration. From the commentary to New York State G O S, and then we had planner and whatnot, do we need to add like another? Uh, whereas the Board of Trustees resolves to. Include the entire.
And then the resolve clause say that the. Authorized or submits the revised coastal assessment form, uh, coastal assessment for commentary prepared by its consulting planner. And the commentary prepared by the Harbor Coastal Zone Management Commission.
That's everything.
Yeah, as our comment.
As our, as our comments. We've submitted those as our comments.
Whereas we have a, whereas the consulting planner has reviewed the submission prepared by the village consulting engineers, G I consultants. The memorandum prepared by H C Z M C and the Village L W U R P has this, as a close assessment for. And commentary from border trustees, so.
But.
We're, we're saying, are we saying that we're sending?
The last whereas is the Board of Trustees has reviewed the C A F and commentary prepared by the villages consultant planner, I think we need to add. H C Z M.
The consulting planner and suggestions. From the Harbor Coastal Zone Management.
By, I mean, maybe we just combined.
The resolve clause, it was what used to be, say what you wanna do.
And, um, it, you know, I, I'm, excuse me for not knowing, is there, is there somewhere in there that we stress the urgency of, uh, of the matter? Um, that we're under, uh, under a, a storm flood emergency and, and need to be able to address this A S A P?
At the beginning.
Hmm, in very beginning? Okay, all right, as long, as long as I understand the urgency of it.
Yeah. So now there, now therefore be resolved, but the village manager is authorized forward the C A F and commentary prepared by the consulting village planner.
And.
And.
Suggestions from the Harbor Coastal Zone Management.
And the memorandum prepared, you know, by the. H C Z M and the villages, L W R P. As our con, as the board with his comments.
Got that, Sally?
Hey, Sally.
Yes, I do, thank you.
Thanks.
The voice of reason from a pie. All right, with, with that amendment, I will make the move. Uh, Mr. Fusco, please, sir. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yeah.
Lucas.
Yes.
To four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, resolution authorizing purchase of three dump trucks and one dump salt truck. Okay, questions or concerns?
I have my same concern, but I said I won't vote for anything until we actually have our capital plan budget, so. I'm consistent.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augustino. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez. Trustee Lucas.
Yeah.
Trustee to four.
Oh, I. You have to be consistent here too, so. The kid, the issue here is you have to really schedule that meeting, otherwise it's gonna.
The next board will take care of it, you guys have had two years, we need bumped up the dump trucks.
What a push. Because I was, I was gonna vote yes and urge you to really look at it.
We will, we will, we will.
How do you vote? Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, uh, what was the vote?
Yes.
What was just? Thank you.
Didn't mean to be blunt, but.
Glad you were.
I was.
Resolution authorizing execution of First Amendment wires, we're gonna hold this, right?
Yeah.
We're holding our First Amendment. What that is, folks, photos, uh, this is, uh, the agreement, uh, with the cell tower people over by the salt shed. Off of Fenimore in the village lot. We're just looking for more information. Okay.
And it's not urgent.
Well.
What I'm saying, it's not.
It's not, we, we can wait.
Yeah. Uh, we're not holding them up.
Resolution accepting turkey trot donation, and I have to do all these separately, right? All right. Uh, acceptance from a gift from Compass Greater New York L L L C for the fifty-sixth annual turkey trot. And it is a thousand dollars, uh, for race, what, five hundred reusable, uh, water bottles with an estimated value of a thousand dollars. For race participants for the fifty-sixth annual turkey trot, which is being held on November twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, I just, for the record, I am just going to disclose, uh, that the gentleman who is making the donation. Uh, Mr. Frank Morris is my son of law.
You're bragging.
No, it's, I have. If I didn't, somebody would be calling me tomorrow. And I've, I've asked the village attorney if it's okay if I vote on this, and he says it is. Okay, so, any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augustino. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee to four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you.
Uh, acceptance of gifts, uh, from One to One Fitness for the fifty-sixth annual tri- turkey trot. One to one fist fitness has offered to donate tote bags with an estimated value of a thousand dollars to raise participants. For the fifty-sixth annual turkey trot, which is being held on November twentieth, twenty twenty-two, there is spelled time to register. For those of you who wanna participate, it's a five K, which is three point one miles. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ogie, please. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yes.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee to four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, the next up is acceptance of a gift from the Hillside Avenue Deli. Uh, the Hillside Avenue Deli has offered to donate turkey soup with an estimated value of five hundred dollars for race participants for the fifty-sixth annual turkey trot. Which is being held on Sunday, November twentieth. Uh, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ogie, please. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yeah.
Lucas.
Yes.
To four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, the next up is I did acceptance of a gift from Orange Theory, uh, Fitness for the fifty-sixth annual turkey trot. Uh, whereas Orange Fitness there is, has offered to donate healthy snacks and water with an estimated value of five hundred dollars for race participants. Uh, of the fifty-sixth annual turkey trot. Questions, concerns?
Thank you.
Uh, okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, call, please. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yeah.
Lucas.
Yes.
To four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, acceptance of a gift from A A A Northeast for the fifty-sixth annual turkey trot. Whereas A A A Northeast has offered to donate bottled water and set up runners' water stations with an estimated value of three hundred and fifty. Uh, for race participants in the turkey trot. Uh, we thank them and I will make the motion.
Second.
Ogie, please. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yeah.
Lucas. Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee to four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh, acceptance of a gift from Best Buy Yonkers for the fifty-sixth annual turkey trot. Uh, Best Buy from Yonkers, that's nice, has offered to donate, wow, one fifty-inch T V. And two fifty-dollar gift cards at an estimated value of, uh, six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
To be awarded, uh, at the turkey trot, you know. Yeah, Yonkers Best Buy.
Wow.
A fifty, fifty-inch T V, and, and it's a true story, it's gonna be my last story tonight. Uh, I remember nineteen sixty-seven, my father bought our first color T V.
Yeah.
It was a Zenith twenty-one inch.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it was five hundred dollars.
Yeah, alright.
Now, now you can get a fifty inch. It's a computer-ready.
Smart TV.
Same price all these years later. And me and my brothers weren't even allowed to touch it for the first year.
Yeah.
Love that, I think, as much as you love that.
I think fifty inches is like a medium-sized TV now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Um I'll make the motion.
Second.
Ogie, please. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas.
Yes.
Trustee to four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Uh resolution funding for paving of Holstead Avenue. Uh we talked about this uh in uh work session. We are receiving a big grant uh from the state to do sidewalks, curbs uh and cutouts uh for handicapped accessible. And uh we are gonna accept that, and uh we are going to do our own paving uh with the knowledge that in a few years we'll have to repave again. For five years, okay. Alright, anybody wanna make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Orgs? Trustee Young.
Yes.
Trustee Natchez.
No.
Trustee Lucas.
No.
Trustee to four.
What is this one?
This is for the paving on Holstead Avenue.
This is part of this, we cleared this in in.
We discussed this.
Clear this in work session.
Yeah, we did. We discussed the work session, we put it on the agenda.
No objection, yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you, Victor. Alright, uh last up, communication through board round two.
On the Holstead Avenue pavement, we'll be we'll be using the ninety thousand dollars we spent on um on the study on Holstead Avenue at least.
Not to Millen and Overland, we don't need this site. So we're doing Millen Overland.
What what is he doing ninety thousand dollars study for?
That's for the eventual repaving of the entire thing, all the way down to test base.
And that would be good for three years?
Sure.
And that's that's for, but that doesn't include the tap grant?
That 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 was separate.
Right.
Separating, we're gonna coordinate the both projects and actually have to give it tomorrow.
And the sidewalk grant is up, is a matching grant up to eighty percent, right? It's not the full price of the project. It's an eighty percent, eighty. Okay. Um. Just a uh couple of uh items. Number one, we really did have a nice uh Halloween in the village. We had, I did complain to the police officers as as a taxpayer. I thought the least they could do is keep the little ghosts and goblins from taking over our streets, but that didn't work, so. We had many, many um children, they seemed to have a great time. And I think that it could be expanded. I think uh we should kinda take that parade, move it down to Harbor Island and give them a few more events to do down there, but overall, I think it was just a really nice experience, and the kids seemed to like it very, very much. Uh. We have a lot of projects that are going on. I I say it over and over again. And we are about to increase our debt from forty-two million to fifty-six million in one year. Granted that it's water and sewer, and we're gonna be increasing our debt again. Because again, we have many, many things that we are buying, we are purchasing, and at some point, you gotta pay for it. Now, one of the things is, we have a um, we're we're going for the um dredging grant, correct? And that's a ten-year grant?
No, does it send your permit?
Well, a ten-year permit.
Yeah.
Right. So are we gonna be looking to dredge year in and year out? Yeah, so the dredging that we approved, if we start doing this year, has to be incorporated into the operating budget, because it's gonna be a reoccurring expense. So that's another thing that you have to look. The money's not there right now. You'd have to increase, you'd probably have to borrow out of uh out of your unused uh fund balance. But, you know, we still have other things that we have to add. We still have to uh give the police their uh retro pay according to their contract. That's gonna have to be done by December. You have a hundred business days, it's up in December. And, you know, you're only halfway through the year, and you've you've already today, tonight, you committed to a million and a half. You've already committed to about six million dollars. So at at so at some point, you can spend all you want. What I keep asking is, how are you going to pay for this? And when are you gonna let the taxpayers know? How are you gonna pay for this? Thank you.
Yeah, please, man.
Okay, my name is Danielle, so I live in Marshmont, I'm from. Uh for two years, I I tried to talk about this before, that time I was here, I asked for garbage fails, I'm Rich Bell Road. And it seems to be impossible. I don't know why. Is there a law that has it? I don't know. The other thing is, there's not one single handicap spot on that street. I think there should be at least two. There's this poor woman that she walks through the cage yard, it's horrible. You know, that's the least we could do. It's not that hard, just one handicapper, two handicap spots. I know it's two jurisdictions, so it's a problem. Everything is a problem. It's half the street is in large and American, half the street is in the town. So it, that's really stupid anyway. Uh as far as like people having twenty-five mile an hour limit on Rich Bell Road, it's like the Grand Prix. I mean, come on. It's between two school zones. It's not even dedicated that street for to being a school zone. You know, and the other thing is, there's no, you know, every other town that I go or village, they have a, you know, parking for pedestrians, you know, like a little stop sign and you can park. There's nothing like that. From Rich Bell, from Palmer to Boston Post Road, and like I said, the cars, you know, go very fast, and that's basically it. Uh we get, I I took to McDonald's and I asked them to please take care of their garbage or encourage people to take their garbage, Starbucks to fancy pop, be honest, to get their cups all over. It it's not, it's not that complicated. I don't understand how, you know, when I I grew up here, okay, we kids were brought up differently anyway, you know, I went to Catholic school and none sort of killed us, you know, we were nasty or, you know, rude or, you know, I mean, that's the way we were brought up, and there's nothing wrong with that. Everybody's afraid to say anything now, you know. And it, this is a nice community, and why is it so hard to get garbage fails?
Look at that.
I can tell you.
Why?
So the residents in your communities used to fill up the garbage can that were in front, and a while ago, way before me, they were removed so that the garbage could be put where the co-op provides the garbage can, which is in the back of the building I have.
Oh, so people were using it for like household garbage, not just.
They were loading them up with household garbage, and that's why they don't exist anymore.
So what about those garbage cans that have the small openings? So it's just. Bottles or coffee cup or.
Recycling can.
It it. Yeah.
I mean, like a recycling.
Well.
If you put, I I mean, I I understand what you're saying about McDonald's and the kids coming out of school, and 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 I I know exactly, you we live right across the street from each other. Uh if we put one by, you know what a bank is?
Yep.
Uh if you put one by by like the driveway or before the driveway of the bank, at least then there'll be a place for the kids to throw their garbage before they come down on the street.
I can try that.
Yeah, and because if 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 it's out, it it's easier actually to walk, to throw my garbage out in the back that way.
And and then across the street behind that that apartment lot.
Yeah.
Put it, so if I can put two, I can put two garbage cans in that area there with and I'll let my, you know, sanitation employees know that if they start to fill up with household trash or
Yeah.
like we have on the avenue every single day, then we'll like to deal with it.
Can't we put the ones that do have a smaller opening?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
We can.
So it's so that, so that you wouldn't be getting everything else over. Um, yeah.
Put them in.
The the bank side is the village. Where does?
The the both sides, both by Boston Post.
Yeah.
Both sides of of Boston Post Road, by Boston Post Road, both sides of village.
Yeah.
Uh as you go up Rich Bell, uh when you get to about two hundred Rich Bell, it turns into the town of America. As you go in towards. Yeah, yeah. And actually, it the the buildings across the street, large one acres, it runs through, the line runs through those, like through the building.
Yeah, mine is the only, the only line that's in the village.
Village, yeah.
And they kept my.
Yes.
Building eight.
You're right across, I mean, our windows probably look at each other.
Yeah.
Sorry, what?
They did remove the tree, right?
I guess. I guess that's an idea.
They did have the tree, right? The tree, the tree that you called about, they did remove the tree.
Thank you, though. We'll we'll look into that. I appreciate the idea.
That made me nuts. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Danielle.
Next up.
Hello again. Allison Stube, five seventy-two, perfectly. Um must have been a busy work session, because there were some items on the work session agenda that I was interested in and so I guess everything went too late.
It was a busy uh executive session.
But I was wondering if someone could explain to me, what is a nuisance law? Because that was on the work session listing here, and I'm like, I've never heard of the nuisance law, I don't know, don't know what it is, so is that something?
Bob, can you explain that?
The uh chief of police has suggested that the board adopt a local law which would allow an action to be brought to shut down businesses which persistently violate the law.
Okay. Um, great, thank you for that. Um, I have one other question. And um, you know, sort of a pink elephant in the room, but okay. Um, there's been concern uh community about the changing vote count for the last week. And um I'm wondering if there will be any explanation from the Board of Elections directly to the public about that.
You'll you'll have to bring that up to the Board of Elections. I I I did send out a message to the community with uh every bit of information I know about what happened. And I don't think that they're gonna give you any different story, but you feel free to uh, you know, write to them and call them. And you probably write to your county representatives and ask them.
Is that, I guess that's the question, is that the process that individuals in the village have to write to?
They can. They can vote the election.
Okay.
I mean, I I'm I'm very positive of what happened. It was a human error.
Okay, but I guess there's enough consternation and a lot of, you know, commentary going around, and I think it would be, it would serve us all well if the folks who made the mistakes would, you know, address the public and kind of clarify things as to why it happened and what exactly happened, and sort of put everybody's minds at ease.
We need to talk to the county, yes.
Yeah, and we got, we got some correspondence about this today. Um and I spoke with the person who wrote it. Uh her name is Amy Siskind and um or Siskind. And, oh, okay, we we got some correspondence about this today, and um I, it from from someone, well, we, there was, there was a a lot of, um I guess there was a lot of discussion about it over social media over the weekend, and we got
Yeah.
a lot, and so we got, we got a note from Amy Siskind today, and she she couldn't be, I talked to her and she couldn't be at the meeting, but um she wanted to know if I would um read part of her letter, and and I'm, she, it's a long, it's a long and thoughtful letter. Um but i- in essence, without reading the entire letter, she asked us um to request that the village bring in an outside nonpartisan organization to review the results of the November eighth election and provide a detailed accounting to VOM residents. Um she believes this level of transparency is the best way for the village that we all love and cherish to move forward in a united way. And I think, you know, I I don't know that it's the role of the Board of Trustees to and I be up to the village attorney to opine, but to actually ask another agency to, you know, to try and oversee another agency. But I do think it would be beneficial um because for the Board of Trustees to, you know, formally ask the Board of Elections to please, you know, give us a full explanation. I I I don't think anybody is suggesting anything untoward happened, but it was a very confusing week. Um there was a lot of um con- consternation and upset about this, and there was a little bit of name-calling this week, and I think we can't certainly interfere with the elections, we shouldn't be opining on this, but I think to Allison's point, everybody wants the answer. I'm sure the Board of Elections will be providing the answer. I mean, they have to certify the election. They certainly had busy week this week, and I'm sure this is not what they want. They don't want to have an election that's confusing, and they don't want to be changing the results. But I think, you know, the this Board of Trustees, since it was just our village election, should adopt a resolution asking them, you know, with all um good faith to just please, you know, clarify what happened. They do always send us information about what the election certification of the election, you know, they do follow up. And I think, you know, we should let them know that we are really interested in in understanding the full.
Why don't we prepare a resolution for the next meeting?
Yeah, we should, we should do that, and and uh because they they owe people an explanation. It was particularly um.
Must've been hard, it's hard being a candidate.
Was hard, well, it wasn't hard for me, because I knew knew what the outcome was, but it was, it was very extremely difficult for the people who lost, who were told for several days that they might have won.
Well.
And um and uh and uh I mean, because I, there was no doubt in our mind. We had, we had the 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 numbers, they simply uh added them incorrectly and posted them and left them up, uh posted wrongly.
Suggesting that we should be talking about the specifics here, I think, I think we should be asking the Board of Elections, just letting them know that we we, like Allison and probably every other resident who paid attention to the election, who voted, just wanting to know what what the snafu was.
I just want to point something out. And and I'm fine with doing that. Uh but if you look at, and this is from the Westchester County website. When when you go to their website and you look at, you know, the results for the election, right? And it goes through Westchester County elections, which were countywide, and uh then it goes through all the towns, Bedford, Cortland, the Marics in it. Underneath, there's three paragraphs. Uh the election results contained on this website are the unofficial tally of election results prepared in accordance with New York State law. Uh due to the multiple transcriptions of voting machine numbers involved in preparing the unofficial tally, all results are subject to error. Furthermore, in accordance with section eight, one, four, two of the New York State election law, some absentee votes may not be available for inclusion in the official tally. On election night, one or more election districts may not report the results. In addition, some reports may include errors which cannot be resolved on election night. Official election results will be compiled and made available by Westchester Board of Elections in accordance with section nine dash two, one, four of the New York State election laws, twenty-four days after the election. So, actually, of all the elections in Westchester County, none of them are certified and finished until twenty-five days after the election. What has traditionally happened is that every uh campaign, especially in a local election like this, and I and I pointed this out in my uh long post, uh every campaign sends folks to the polling places. They get the numbers, nor you've been involved in this, Dan's been involved in it, I've been involved in it, but this has been happening for generations. They get the numbers, they come back to wherever the respective parties are gathering. Uh they report those numbers. In in the case of uh recent elections, you wait until about ten o'clock, and the county publishes the early voting tallies for your community. And then you know who's the winner. And that has been happening uh since time immemorial. Uh and that's what happened on Tuesday night. And uh then the election, you know, the uh county made mistakes. Uh the county said, yeah, it's probably a mistake, but we'll fix it on Thursday when we run all the carts. And they, you know, that, so they left it up there uh until they recanvassed two days later, as they have to do under law. And then it was fixed.
Can I say something?
Yeah, no, just let me finish. So I just, for for those who who are, you know, you know, i- i- and and there are a lot of people ascribing uh nefarious motives. Uh I've been accused of fixing the election. Uh, you know, fixing the election, you you do about ten years in jail, and and I, I like you, Lou. But I'm not doing ten years.
Oh, come on.
Uh I I did, I did not mean for this conversation to at all get in the specifics. I just think.
But I think it's important to get.
I don't think we, this.
I think it is, because there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of consternation.
I don't think it's our place to be talking or second guessing. I think it is our place to simply express our concern with what happened, and that's all I'm asking.
And and everybody's agreeing with you that we're gonna do that, but I think it's important because there were a lot of stuff put out online and talked about that actually wasn't based in fact, and I'm just telling people what actually happened. You 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 talked about in the beginning, there was a lot of consternation, so, you know, I I'm just addressing some of the consternation, and the laws as I know them. I'm fine with doing what you proposed doing.
And 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 I will.
I would just say it's not up to us to opine on this, and I think we should stay away from it and just.
With anybody, any, any competent player in this, in this game, knew what the results were Tuesday night. And uh and and people who who uh clung to those erroneous results for two days are so a- a- allowed uh allowed doubt to take root, and that's where the problem is.
Yep.
I mean, so um i- if if you i- i- if you were uh competent and involved in this election, you knew the results.
Yeah.
Alright, our parents didn't claim victory, they knew better.
They knew better.
Can I come back to Norris' proposal? I think, why, why, why should this board delay something we all agree on?
Because we don't have anything in front of us, or when have we ever acted on a resolution that we don't have in front of us?
Just asking for an explanation.
I I mean, I think.
Simple as that. I would second the motion.
Board of, the Board of Trustees, I mean.
Uh I I'm fine, but let's, let's just, you know, you often say you can't deal with the stuff, and you don't wanna, you know, handle stuff when you don't have some backup. So, you know, then you've been very clear about following the procedure. And I was gonna wait two weeks and then do it, but if you guys want to do it tonight, but, you know, let's, let's not, you know, decide when we're gonna pass rules then.
No, I think, I, this is something that, you know, that came up today or came up in the last week. It's a very simple resolution asking for.
Do you have it?
No, I'm just saying. No, I'm just saying we can just write a resolution. I'm just.
And and we should direct everybody with a complaint about this, to direct their complaints to the county.
Or just their questions. I I I don't know why we're using the words complaint, but let's not just be ju- I don't think there's judgment here. It's just, we're asking.
Then you you earn a loan.
Nora, just write the resolution.
You know, the Board of, the Board of Trustees.
Whereas.
Whereas the Board of Trustees respectfully requests the Westchester County Board of Elections to provide a full and complete explanation of.
Detailed.
Detailed, uh, full and complete detailed explanation of. Um, the vote count, the vote count in, you know, November, the November eighth village election and the.
How about the confusion?
The confusion around the vote.
Around vote count from between Tuesday night.
Between November eighth and.
November eighth and November tenth.
Or now, I mean, I don't think it's now, but November eighth, you know, sub- November or, you know, subsequent to November eighth. I don't know.
How about November eighth and November tenth when they fixed it? Because when you say something, it 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 sounds like you're not quite sure.
I I think everybody knows what the results are. I mean, but.
I haven't been alone.
I have been alone. I think people know what the results are. Um. I don't know. Does that sound?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I make that motion that we adopt that resolution.
I'll second add this to the agenda.
Yeah, oh, yeah, let's add it to the agenda first.
I make it, I I make a motion to add an item to the agenda, rate of vote count.
Second.
All in favor of adding an item to the agenda?
Hi.
Okay, Nora, you wanna make the motion?
Okay. Anybody? No. Do you have, somebody have it?
You want to do it again?
I think I may have it.
Wait, wait, Sally's got it.
Sally's got it. Sally, can you read it back?
Whereas the Board of Trustees respectfully requests the Board of Elections to provide a full and complete detailed explanation. Of the confusion around the vote count from the November eighth election and the revised November tenth results.
I, well, I'm not not where, I think, I think whereas there was some confusion and, uh, and, uh, and 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 error. In the initial vote counts, be it resolved that the county asks for an explanation. I think that would, I don't think, I think the whereas is the wrong place. Right, am I right?
Yeah, finally.
Yeah, another situation is that they, uh, that the the county published, uh, incorrect, uh, a vote total.
We're asking them to clarify the situation. We're not telling them what the situation was.
Be resolved. Can you please explain yourself?
Okay, everybody fine with that?
Can we?
He he said.
Read it one more time, please.
Sally, can you read it one more, please?
Yeah, I I heard it, Augie. Thank you. If we change it to the way Lou wants it done is, it would be something like, well, it would be whereas due to, due to the confusion. Around the vote count from the November eighth election and the revised November tenth results. Resolved.
You resolve.
Result of that the Board of Trustees respectfully requests the Board of Elections to provide a full and complete detailed explanation.
Explanation of what happened. Yeah, I think that.
And you know, so but you, you send that letter from Amy Siskind because I didn't get it.
I saw it. It's it was, it's it's a little.
Have to add the ninth in there because there were changes on the, there were three changes that were made by the Board of Elections. Between the eighth and the tenth.
Yeah, I think she said, oh, I. She put it to Nora.
To the eighth through the tenth.
Okay.
Yeah, could you say a minute?
Well, I mean, it's, you shouldn't have, you wouldn't have to boil it.
Let's see if it's actionable. Um, Mr. Start.
Well, I'm a member of the traffic, am I still a member of the Traffic Commission?
Yeah, why would you not be a member of the traffic? Why are you saying that?
Please don't interrupt me. I wasn't planning on speaking, however, I heard what you guys were saying. I accept the results of the Board of Elections. Had you just done that and and. But you had to go and and make comments about the people who were questioning the results or questioning what you had to say. All, all. I'm sorry.
Who are you speaking to?
Speaking to me, go ahead.
I I'm speaking to. Well.
Go ahead.
I I I I wasn't participating. You talked about the comments and and online.
Let him speak.
I I wasn't. A part of that, but I read everything.
Sure.
I didn't hear anyone. Question or or say or suggest that you had something to do with the results. What I heard was that people were saying suddenly there were results, you were saying they were wrong. And people were just. Waiting to find out the actual results. Nobody that I read accused you of any wrongdoing, but let me finish, please.
Go ahead, George, please.
I didn't hear any of that. If if someone said that, I must have missed it. But I, it certainly wasn't many people, people who were questioning and my disappointment, Tom. Was in the way you handled the people who responded to you and just said, you know. What you're saying that the numbers are wrong, you may be right, but right now there's no evidence. We just have to wait. Allow the Board of Elections to reevaluate, recount, and whatever, whatever the results are, obviously we'll all accept it and go on and congratulate the winners. That's what I heard. What I then heard from you, who were kind of insulting comments to those people who were simply saying, yeah. Maybe it's wrong, maybe you're right, but let's wait and let, I'm gonna let you finish. And from what I read, I think some apologies are due to, for some of the comments that you made. I thought they were inappropriate. And as I said, I accept the the results of the Board of Elections. I clearly they made a mistake. And and that that's my comment. If you you're welcome, you want to criticize.
No, I don't want to criticize you.
Last time I spoke, you draw me a putz.
I didn't, I'd never said that to you. I absolutely never said that to you.
People have heard that.
Yeah, that's just wrong.
So I'll sit down, I'll sit down.
I'm sorry that you heard that. That's wrong. I'm not lambasting. All I'm saying is we just, you know what?
I was very telling.
I disagree with you about your characterization. I'm not going to go into the specifics. There were may maybe many things you didn't see. There were some things that were taken down. There were some things that were vicious personal attacks against me and other people.
Yes.
That were taken down. Uh, and. I'm just telling you that there's a lot of stuff you didn't see and there there were people who actually accused me and I'm sure maybe you didn't look at every site. Actually accused of being involved in fixing the election. And my response to them was I would be happy to go with you to the district attorney and you can make that charge. Uh, because, you know, of a lot of things, I'm not that. Uh, I I I disagree with you about your characterization of, uh, how I work, but we we can disagree on that, but thank you for your comments.
One listener, so the one comment that attracted everyone's attention was to somebody who didn't. Who didn't make those comments, you know, maybe not that it's abusive, but the person that you. Made a very nasty, unpleasant comment to, certainly did not fit that description.
And I don't believe I made a nasty comment. I didn't make a nasty comment. We disagree on that. Have a good night. I don't, I'm not apologizing. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Report from Village Manager. Do you want to finish voting on this? We got Nora. You need the motion?
I need the motion.
I'll second. Paul Roll, please. Trustees Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tifur?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Thank you for keeping us in line, Augie.
Report from Manager Barbario.
Two items, Mayor. Uh, one of them was today we had the kickoff meeting for the Mamaroneck. Um, river. Um, flood study.
That was really interesting.
Yeah, that was, that was.
That's the mayor. Young was on it, Sonoff and I were on it as well, and, uh, we will start to share and provide. A consultant that the state is hiring, uh, to do this study. It's a global study. It's the, um, basically the entire area. I have some screenshots I'll share with the board. Um, of all the contributing, uh, villages, towns, whatever they are, county. That, uh, come down to the Mamaroneck Shoddricker.
Yeah.
And so, um. I was very happy because it was a promise that, um, that the, I'm sorry, Assistant Commissioner of the D C, Jim Tierney. Uh, promised, uh, probably, I guess it was maybe, um. January of this year and it finally happened, so.
They just, they sent us the video, so we can post that.
So we'll just share that.
Yeah.
Great.
Share that.
Very informative.
Uh, the other item is the dog park. We had a dog park meeting, um, not this past, a week ago, Sunday. And three, um, areas continue to be in discussion. Um, and, uh, when the dog park is ready.
Meeting today.
Uh.
They were, they were, they had another.
While while we were here? Okay.
So we don't know what happened.
They'll provide some, uh, some guidance, uh, as far as what their areas are looking for. One of them is the content of the view parking lot. We converted to make. Um, dog park.
Or part of it, part of it.
Part of it. Right now it's like forty percent occupancy, so we kind of convert the rest of it to a dog park. That's something that's.
Might solve other problems.
Yeah.
And and and, uh, I was, Nora, when you couldn't make that meeting.
You went, yeah.
Yeah, and it's discussion too about, uh, that a dog park has to be like a, uh, an acre. But we can also have dog runs. So we could, we could actually, uh, we could actually have a, 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 a dog park and a dog run.
It was a good meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, Jerry, I have a couple que- or questions or suggestions for the seawall, uh, in the, um. Uh, West Basin, uh, which you declared an emergency on.
Yeah.
Um, I would hope that you would get, uh, three bids. I know that's not required, but you, um, by the emergency, but I hope you would. I know that the previous engineer had, uh, you did a scope of work, you know, for the correction of that.
What'd you say about the previous engineer can do?
The previous engineer told us that he had created a scope of work for the fixing of that. So it would be, if you have a scope of work, then it'd be easy to get three bids.
We have shared that with a contractor already.
So you're getting three bids?
No, we're just getting one bid and we're getting it fixed.
It would be helpful if you could get more than one bid. The second aspect of it is, I don't know that the emergency, uh, covers, uh. Uh, not getting, uh, permits from the other agencies outside of the village.
And we talked to them already. If we do it in kind, if not, we do have to get permits, correct? Our goal is to do in kind.
Is in kind gonna stab the damage, though?
But it did on the other side when it fell down. On the East Basin side, we were able to get in kind, under an emergency, under either. We're able to do it. We called the contractor and he fixed it right away.
Okay, uh, report from Third Treasurer.
Yes, Mayor, we have two items, uh, two resignations, one from the planning board. Uh, Ellen Styler, and the second is from the V O M Parks and Rec Board. Heather Milboer.
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 Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, folks, for your service. Report from the Village Attorney.
Nothing for me to, I'm mayor.
Uh, minutes commissioned boards committees, minutes of board trustee work session, regular meetings of September twenty-seventh and October eleventh. Uh, minutes at a planning board meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, uh, minutes at a board of architecture review meetings of September twenty-second and October twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Minutes of the zoning board of appeals meeting of March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and minutes of the traffic commission meeting of April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Okay, uh, thank you to everyone who took the time to vote and to work on campaigns, no matter which campaigns you worked on. Uh, thankfully, that's all behind us and, uh, we can move. Forward with the, uh, work of government. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Augustin, all in favor?
All right.
This was my outfit for Halloween. I was bringing home. I love that. You are a great company. It's something along my streets. I drove up with my car and I was handing candy out to kids out the window of my car. I'm sure that.
Oh, yeah, that 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 almost got you arrested.
I got in my car, I loaded up a bag, and when I saw parents, I drove over and pulled the parents, I get handfully candy.